Good evening. And hello, I'm Mary Dixon. I'm the Vice President of the League of Women Voters of Glendale-Burbank. I would like to welcome you to our Candidates Forum for the Glendale City Special Election. As we begin our evening of democracy in action, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Before we start the forum, we have a few announcements. First, City Clerk Artie Kusakian would like to tell you about a new initiative from his office to Get Out the Vote. Artie?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The City Clerk's Office is excited to announce a new pilot program that we have initiated whereby we are distributing Get Out the Vote door hangers to any community groups who wish to help in getting the word out about the upcoming special election in June 3, 2014. The election is for one council seat, as you are aware, and a charter amendment. But unlike previous city elections, this one will be consolidated with the state primary in June. If anyone wishes to help the City Clerk's Office distribute these throughout the city, you can sign up by calling our City Hall office at 818-548-4000 and ask to participate in the Door Hangar Project. The City Clerk's Office can use the help of as many people as we can. The program is a great way to fulfill community service hours for graduating high school seniors and for service organizations to get involved in raising awareness about the election. Myself and my staff are awaiting your telephone calls. Please call us today. Again, that number is 818-548-4000 to be able to get one of these door hangers and distribute them in your neighborhood. For more information about this election and other elections, you can always visit our website at glendalevotes.org. Thank you, and thank you for running for office.
Thank you, Artie. The League of Women Voters was established in 1920 after winning the right to vote for women. The League is one of the nation's most respected community-based organizations. In addition to our work in the elections area, League volunteers work on issues of local importance from education to healthcare, land use, and housing. Holding Candidates Forums is something that the League has done since its inception in 1920. We do not support or oppose any of these candidates for office or any political parties. We want everyone to vote so our elected leaders represent our entire community. We are a voice for all, working to connect people directly with government. We provide and work with facts. We educate and we advocate for change. The questions you will be hearing tonight are questions from the public and are not scripted beforehand by party officials or advocates for a particular candidate. The format also calls for adherence to the terms of civil discourse by both candidates and the public. The hallmark of democracy is the willingness of all members of our community to treat each other with courtesy and respect, not just the people we agree with. It is in that spirit that we are here this evening to engage in a vital part of our democratic process, a civilized discussion of the important issues that confront our community. The League would like to thank the City of Glendale for providing voters with the opportunity to view the forum, both in person here tonight and via rebroadcast on Charter Cable Channel 6, AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and streaming online at www.glandale.tv. We are particularly grateful for the assistance of the Public Information Officer, Tom Lorenz, and the outstanding technical crew of Glendale TV, including Brian Halloran. They literally make us all look good. If you have the last-minute questions about voting, what your ballot will look like, where your polling place is, or how to return an absentee ballot, check the League's website and smartvoter.org. Everything you need to know will be there. And if you're still looking for nonpartisan, objective information on the ballot measures, visit the League of Women Voters of California's education website, cavotes.org, for in-depth information. We are a volunteer organization, and membership is open to both men and women. Please consider joining us to make a difference in Glendale and Burbank. And now our moderator, Rita Zwern. Rita is a League member and an active volunteer in this community. We are so grateful to her for taking the time from her busy schedule to serve as our moderator this evening. Rita?
Thanks, Nancy. Good evening. I am Rita Zwern, and I'll be the moderator for this evening's forum. This evening's forum will be televised live and will be repeated at subsequent times on GTV6 through the facilities of the City of Glendale. It will also be streamed on the city's website. No reproduction or rebroadcast of this forum may be made without the written permission of the League of Women Voters and the City of Glendale. The audience here tonight is invited to submit written questions for the candidates. Please raise your hand if you would like to ask a question, and one of the monitors will provide you with a card and pencil. Questions will be collected only during the opening statements and the first two questions. We would like to request that the audience turn off all smartphones, cell phones, and pagers, and that they refrain from applauding or otherwise disrupting the forum. If a candidate's supporters cause disruptions during another candidate's remarks, the second candidate will be given additional time to compensate for the interruption. Each candidate will be allowed one minute for an opening statement. Following this, I will ask questions submitted by the audience and the public. Candidate number one on the die will have two minutes to respond to the first question. The next two candidates will then have one minute each to respond to the same question. Candidate number four will then have two minutes to respond to the second question, followed by one-minute responses by the fifth and first candidates, and so on. There will be 10 questions in all. Following the last question, there will be an open round where each candidate will have up to one minute to respond to any of the questions they were not previously able to answer. Following the question period, the candidates will be given one minute each, two minutes each, excuse me, for a closing statement. Our timekeepers will alert candidates to the time remaining with signs of one minute, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and then a stop sign when they're out of time. Attacks of a personal nature, including private matters, having no bearing on a candidate's public persona or ability to perform the duties of the office in a competent, ethical manner, will not be tolerated. If a candidate makes a personal attack during his remarks, or her remarks, the time required for me to interrupt the candidate and remind him of the rule will be taken from his own speaking time. I would like to begin by introducing the candidates for the open seat on the Glendale City Council in ballot order. Mr. Rick Barnes, Mr. Mike Mohill, Mr. Chahay Karolian, Ms. Paula Devine, Mr. Vartan Garpetian. We will now begin with the opening statements. Mr. Barnes, your opening statement, please.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you for hosting this, and good evening, residents of Glendale. And the most important to me is that you are the ones that are going to go out and tell your neighbors about those of us here tonight. And our reflection is what you're going to be looking at. So with that, when I am elected, I'll bring accountability and accessibility to City Hall. I'll listen to all sides, working with everyone to build a clear understanding of the paths necessary, the decisions necessary, to bring the best decision for the City of Glendale. I'll make public service a priority and ensure that our public officials, the fire, the police, the water, the electrical departments, that they have the necessary resources for supporting our city and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill, your opening statement, please.
This election is about fixing our government gone out of control with wasteful spending. A city budget that doubled from approximately $400 million in 2000 to over $800 million today, and yet city services did not improve. A city debt increased by more than $300 million. Unfunded and unsustainable pension obligations that have grown by over $250 million and about $200 million in the expected shortfall of retiree healthcare coverage costs. These obligations will eventually drive our city into bankruptcy if we do not go from Band-Aid fixes to other alternatives. A city government that is overcharging residents, businesses, and schools on the most basic city services, water and electricity, is a government we need to change with new direction and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Mr. Karolian, your opening, excuse me, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you to the League for organizing this forum, which will give the opportunity to each of us to express our positions on issues that matter the most. These issues need to be addressed promptly and properly by concerned, visionary, experienced, and dedicated individuals. My knowledge, experience, education, and sensitivity to the ordinary citizen's concerns give me the tools to tackle the challenges our city is facing today. While mobilizing thousands of citizens and encouraging them to take part, an active role in shaping the future of our city, my mission has been to perpetuate an environment of transparency, dialogue, mutual trust, and furtherance of common goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. I'm a 35-year resident of Glendale and have spent half that time in public service. I have demonstrated my leadership abilities and my commitment to our community. I have served eight years on the Commission on the Status of Women, three years as Chair. I am currently on the Board of Glendale Healthy Kids and Glendale Police Foundation, and I serve on the Advisory Board for Glendale Venice Medical Center. I believe in public service. My background is in education. I hold a master's degree in education administration. I was a teacher, department chair, coach, and first-girls athletic director under Title IX. My background has provided me with experience in leadership, collaboration, decision-making, and teamwork. My priorities in this election are traffic, pedestrian cycling safety, traffic congestion, fiscal responsibility, and sustainability. Glendale is a beautiful and prosperous city. I am running for City Council to ensure that this continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian, your opening statement, please.
My mic is off?
Yeah. Sorry.
Sorry. Should I continue or start all over again?
Start.
Start all over again, all right.
Two chances.
Yeah. Two chances, two chances. Well, starting all over again, since I would like to also thank the League for, League of Women Voters, for hosting this forum, and also thank the audience for being here. My name is Vartan Garpetian. I'm a longtime resident of Glendale. I'm married to my beautiful wife, Armina. We have three children, all of whom attend public schools. I'm a community leader and an activist. For over a decade, I've been a member of several boards and commissions, as well as many nonprofit organizations. I also coach AYSO. For over 10 years, I have two teams this year, which is a big responsibility. Currently, I'm on Historic Preservation Commission. Tonight, I'm looking forward to sharing with all of you my ideas and plans as to how to grow Glendale the smart and responsible way, and how to bring trust and responsibility back to local governments. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now begin the question period. The first question will be directed to Mr. Barnes. Under its downtown-specific plan, there's been very specific, very significant housing development in downtown Glendale, possibly more front-loaded than originally contemplated. With reduced parking availability in the new developments, can Glendale public transit handle the expected increase in demand? Please explain your answer. Mr. Barnes, your two-minute response, please.
At the moment, it's not handling it, and it's not even built yet. With little effort, this morning, we had a meeting, and people were 15 to 20 minutes late because every one of the streets were backlog with traffic. We have to deal with this, and there's a number of ways to do it. There's, New York City had the same problem. They used a major plan and change. We've got to look at a lot of different prospects of looking at what we do with traffic. And that's the most important thing right now, is how is it going to happen? We have so many more units coming on, and they're actually coming up with even more units. Traffic has to be dealt with, and that's a priority. And it's going to have to be coming with a lot of different ideas from other cities that have actually conquered that problem. And right now, I don't see a good idea that we have that's focused front-load for all the traffic that we're going to be getting, whether it be pedestrian, bicycles, or automobiles, and where the bus is going to go. And we have to start looking at examples, and maybe use Orange as one of those examples. So I think that we do have a great deal of effort. We have a great city. We have a lot of minds to work on it. And I think by being on this side of the dais, we will have understanding, and we'll have people be able to come in and speak and listen to them and work with plans that might just really work that we'd never thought of. So I'm willing to do that, and I will listen and work with everyone to make that decision occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill, your one-minute response, please.
Unfortunately, the damage has already been done by this council and the previous council when they decided to approve 3,800 apartments. They didn't, they did not even consider the infrastructure of the city. So now we are what they would say stuck in the mud. But we have to get out of it somehow. I would suggest the first thing we can do is synchronize the lights in the downtown metropolitan area of Glendale and actually the whole business district of Glendale. We'll have to also have more busing. Do not believe we should have any bicycles. I believe in bicycle safety and so forth, but we should not have any bicycles in the downtown district of Glendale. It should stay with cars. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karolian, your one-minute response, please.
I also believe, in fact, probably Mike was reading from my notes here, I believe in synchronization of lights as one aspect or one way of dealing with the situation. However, we need to do everything and anything possible to get people out of their cars into public transportation. We have to encourage that on two facets. One, by the city providing more transportation instead of raising the rates, and at the same time, encouraging people to carpool at the very least if they cannot take public transportation to get from point A to point B, especially if they live in this city. Obviously, we have added bike lanes, and that is in the process of being augmented to different parts of the city. So that will encourage hopefully individuals to take the bikes and use that as a transportation means and not just for recreation purposes.
Thank you. The next question will be directed first to Ms. Devine. Compared to cities of similar size, Glendale is reputed to have among the worst and most unsafe drivers and has very high insurance rates. What additional plans or programs do you believe could be enacted to achieve traffic calming and better, safer driving? Please explain your answer. Mrs. Devine, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you. Having been serving on the Glendale Police Foundation and having a relationship with the police force and the chief and other captains, I get a monthly report on what is going on in Glendale as far as traffic. What, I have the three Es that I would like to suggest: education, engineering, and enforcement. Our traffic problem has got to start being mitigated by educating our young, our youth, from when they're young all the way up to the elderly, so that we know the traffic laws. We need to have more enforcement. Police Chief Castro is now talking about taking sworn officers off of the desk duty and putting them into the streets for more enforcement, and also using reserve police officers in order to give, be out there checking on violations. I was out on Saturday, and there was a police officer giving a ticket. I went over to him. I said, "What's going on?" He wasn't exactly in the same uniform, and he said, "I'm a reserve officer, and my duty today is to give tickets to stop-sign violators." So I thought that was really good, and he said, "I'm now on my way to Grandview." So if we can increase the enforcement and increase education to our drivers, it all starts at home as well. You know, parents, you can talk to your kids and get them to understand the laws and the rules of the road. So I think if we can start doing those two things, we can somehow educate and use enforcement to stop all of our traffic accidents and violations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian, your one-minute response, please.
Yes, I'm glad you asked that question. We had 15 fatalities in the last five years. 70% of them were of Armenian-American descent, and 70% of the people who got injured were of Armenian-American descent. And people on the other side of those accidents were from the Armenian-American community. So what we need to do is reach out to that segment of the community in a different way. There are local channels that we can run, safety programs or safety commercials on. There are adult day healthcare centers that you can approach and run your safety programs in there. I went to a workshop for traffic and safety. A friend of mine was there, and his grandfather was the gentleman who got killed on Western and Glen Oaks. And it's a sad scene. Also, the school safety is very important, because, have you been in front of a school lately? It's crazy. I have three children. Every time I want to drop off or pick up my kids, it's like a war zone. We need to have crossing guards in every school site. It was taken away because of the budget.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes, your one-minute response, please.
Excellent. Yes, the insurance rates are high, but that also includes how many citations, because the insurance rates go up the more the citations are written. So we have on Glen Oaks, on West Glen Oaks, in a month, average about 900 citations. When you're having those citations, that also increases the rates. Yes, we have auto accidents. Yes, we have bad drivers. Yes, those, but it's around the country, it's around the world, where traffic is changing. Without education and making it mandatory, without making certain that we start letting people see it, maybe we need to go and start doing television programs. Maybe we need to do different things, but just because insurance rates up, it's not just necessarily the accidents, it's our enforcement is occurring, and it's, we need to do more of it. And because of our previous councils, we do not have enough enforcement officers because they did not fund it. That's part of the problem. We've got to clear that up and get that started. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be directed first to Mr. Mohill. The California Environmental Protection Agency has released new maps analyzing the effect of pollution. The Glendale neighborhoods, although not ranked the worst, were in the upper portions of the scale, reflecting significantly high levels of pollution such as water contamination and fine air particle pollution. If elected, what would you do to improve Glendale's water and air quality? Mr. Mohill, your two-minute response, please.
Well, I think we need to analyze those reports, just like, for example, Shoal Canyon. They want to increase the amount of garbage in that dumpster, and they're saying it won't have a significant amount of influence and effect in the neighborhood. Well, we're creating the problem of pollution. Right in my own backyard in Shoal Canyon, I think the politicians are the ones that create this problem, and we, and they have, they have to take responsibility. We're handed a bag of sometimes impossible things to do, Chromium 6, and we can ask all the experts to help us out, but at the end of the day, the council members make the final decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karolian, your one-minute response, please.
Several things can be done, just a few examples, in order to deal, excuse me, with the pollution situation. We all have to understand one thing first, that each and every one of us, when you look at this, that is six, is responsible for approximately five pounds of trash every single day. So first and foremost, we have to look at ourselves as to why is that happening? Why isn't there a system in our minds to begin with? Because I know the city provides all the systems. Why don't we recycle? And why don't we limit the production of trash that is upon ourselves? We can control that if we start thinking about it. Second, pollution also is through gas, transportation, public transportation also. Again, it's another issue here that needs to be addressed, that people need to get out of their cars, people need to get into carpooling mentality and start thinking about how much pollution they're causing by using their vehicles.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. I'm proud of Glendale and what we are doing and what we have been doing for the last 10 years with Chromium 6. We are at the forefront of research. Currently, the maximum containment level is, for Glendale, is far less than the standard, and that's something that we can be proud of. Our drinking water is, is better than or as good as bottled water. So I think we have to continue that research and continue to keep our water clean. Second of all, the Shoal Canyon waste dump, I have talked to some of the homeowners in that area, and they feel that, yes, there is an odor coming from the landfill, and so what the city has to do is work a little bit harder at containing that methane. I know they work very hard at getting a pipe to the plant, and it's slower.
Thank you. The next question will be directed to Mr. Garpetian.
Yes.
Glendale Water and Power currently is under contract to obtain a significant part of its electricity from a coal-powered plant in Utah. But that contract will expire in the not-too-distant future. What new and different kinds of energy sources should the city focus on? Please explain your answer. Mr. Garpetian, your two-minute response, please.
There are many different sources that's out there and it's available. The wind source, the solar panels. City needs to be more involved in providing more incentives for the homeowners to install solar panels in their homes, especially for the new projects. I was a member of a green building task force that we, we came up with the idea of the Tier One and Tier Two ordinance, and that's what City Council approved, which was the Tier Two of that ordinance, which has a lot to do with renewable energy and not use the coal, because you have to burn coal to generate energy, and that's what pollutes the air. But as far as the city itself, we need to make an example. We need to set an example for the homeowners. And if we use more solar panels and solar energy in our buildings, I know we started it, but we need to do a lot more of that, and give more incentive to the residents in order for them to feel compensated, if you will, to go to that route, because it's not easy. Every time you want to, every time you want to put a solar panel on your roof, they will ask you to maybe re-roof your house before you put your panels up. So the incentives has to be a little bit more greater for the, for the citizens to use alternative energy, so it reduces the load on the city's side.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes, your one-minute response, please.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, it's interesting that we're looking at coal, and there's more and more development of clean coal burning. The other problem that we're facing is that we have requirements to get rid of those coal plants and go to wind, solar, and at the same time, that cost factor is going to raise all of our rates. So at some point, we're going to have to start looking at what will we be able to do, and have to look at the dollar and cents. And sometimes they forget that a lot of our, a lot of us are on fixed incomes. How are we going to be able to even afford? That's going to force us into stopping using the electric. Then you turn around, and our city's going to have to raise the rates to pay for the costs, existing costs that's not going to go away. So yes, that is some. In the future, there's so many things coming up fast and quick at us, including the clean coal burning. So at this time, I'm saying that we have to look at the future, what our contracts are, and renew every possibility that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill, your one-minute response, please.
Clean coal is still the best way to go. It's a political issue also, but we also have to think about wind, solar, and the elder alternative. Cannot just go from dropping coal to any of the other alternatives. We give people who switch to solar panels a credit, but no more, but no longer in the future. They have to have a consistent policy. It's an, it's an issue of, that's, it's here to get forever, and we need to continue looking for alternative methods for energy.
Thank you. The next question will be directed first to Mr. Karolian. The city budget continues to run a deficit despite improving revenues and other administrative changes, such as reducing retirement benefits for new city employees. In light of the city's financial situation, are there more changes that need to be made?
It's an issue of, it's here forever, and we need to continue looking for alternative methods for energy.
Thank you. The next question will be directed first to Mr. Karolian. The city budget continues to run a deficit despite improving revenues and other administrative changes, such as reducing retirement benefits for new city employees. In light of the city's financial situation, are there more changes that need to be made? Please explain the kinds of changes you believe are needed and which you could support. Mr. Karolian, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you. Well, until a dramatic recovery of the economy, the only solution at this point is for the city council to make either one of the options, or to decide on one of the options, or a combination of several options. I believe this combination should be one that the city council needs to address. And of course, we all know, and if we don't know, we should know, that the employee associations and the council are in discussions as we speak in preparation for the upcoming budget. The combination, according to my belief, should include the following: reducing city staff, reducing salaries and/or benefits, outsourcing city services, eliminating significant services such as libraries and parks. It may be one of the options, it may be a combination of these four options. However, we have to keep in mind the following, that the city must find a means to deliver service with the understanding that two-thirds of the general fund pay for the police and fire services. We also have to understand that meeting and conferring with the employee associations is mandatory. It's a required thing by the state law. City benefits to our employees are contractual obligations, so if there's going to be anything that has to be changed there, it has to be based on contract, a new contract. And eventually, we must prioritize our services that you, the citizens, and the business owners of this city are willing to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. First of all, my top priority will be safety, and I will not compromise the police and the fire department in any way. And I also wish to keep the pensions and our benefits competitive with other markets. Second, I acknowledge that the city council has been working on pension reform, that the employees have given concessions. However, for pension reform, I think we have to start now. I think we have to continue until we have resolved the issue. I suggest we do a, form a blue-ribbon panel with a pension expert at the helm, come up with solutions, bring all the stakeholders to the table, talk about it, get the resolution of the pension reform completed immediately.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian, your one-minute response, please.
Yes, thank you. Let's face it, fire, police, employee associations, our employees, they're not going anywhere, and I don't want them to go anywhere. This is a top-heavy organization, service organization, like any other city. Most of our budget goes towards our employees. But let's face the other issue. Our issue is not just the pensions and plans. Our issues are that we do not have enough resources, we do not have enough revenues. Our revenue's been flat for a long, long time. And when the times were good, in mid-two thousand, three, four, five, six, we did not invest in right places to make more revenues for our city, so we wouldn't have to face this thing. And I think before nineteen ninety-nine, this city had a motto that said, "Paid-as-you-go, city." And I think that's what we need to go back to and live within our means, and not spend the money we do not have, and invest in projects that would generate revenues for us, not the other way around. Do not invest in trophy properties, invest in properties that would generate more revenues for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be directed first to Mr. Barnes. On the June third ballot, there will be a Glendale proposition, Measure G, which addresses the election procedures applicable when certain city elective offices become vacant. Do you support or oppose Measure G, and please explain your answer? Mr. Barnes, your two-minute response, please.
Okay. Measure G, I chair the Measure G committee at the Glendale College, so it was interesting that that was also our Measure G here. I oppose it. I believe the democratic process of voting is absolutely imperative to stay with. Whether it costs some extra money, where we did, like this time, we're voting with the county, we need to have our public voting, we need to have our residents voting, and that's where my position is. We need to make certain that's it and go from there. I oppose Measure G, and I hope you'll vote with me.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill, your one-minute response, please.
Well, the city council does what the city council wants to do, and Measure G is no different. They want council people to say they were, they are. To be honest with you, I don't have a good answer for that one. Go by.
Okay. Mr. Karolian, your one-minute response, please.
I believe in the process of perpetuating democratic process and getting people involved in having their voices heard, I would be against it. Let the community, let the voters decide, and not the council, as it is being suggested currently.
Great, thank you. The next question will be directed first to Ms. Devine. It's been reported that the candidates for this upcoming city council election said they wouldn't take contributions from employee unions because they have to vote on contracts. Since city council members also vote on development projects, do you think the same principle should apply, and candidates running for city council should refuse campaign contributions from developers? Why or why not? Ms. Devine, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you. I am very proud to have the endorsement of the Glendale Firefighters Association. I am not taking any funds from that association. I do not think that campaign candidates should take money from developers. I will personally not take money. I think that in order to make a clear, open-minded, and fair decision, one must be completely free of ties from any commitments of committees, or organizations, or development entities. So I totally agree that candidates should not take funds from developers.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian, your one-minute response, please.
I'm glad you asked that question, because it was very important. I agree, candidates should not take any kind of contributions from the developers. As far as our city employee associations or city unions, I sent an email to every one of them about a month and a half ago, two months ago, to meet with them, because I wanted to meet with them and listen to their side of the story. There's a lot of talk about pensions and unfunded liabilities. So I sent an email to meet with every one of them, to listen to them, because I'm a good listener. I have three daughters, and between my wife, my mom, and everybody else in our house, I got to learn to listen the hard way. But anyways, but as far as the endorsements, it's like endorsements are the same way as, in a way, of paying contributions. Because when you're endorsed with an association, it is like a contribution, because they make phone calls for you, they go door-to-door, and Ms. Devine got the endorsement without everybody else being interviewed. And that's what I had an issue with the employees association.
Mr. Barnes, your one-minute response, please.
I agree. If you're going to endorse, maybe you ought to interview everybody. That's number one. Number two, it's very expensive to run a campaign in the city of Glendale, extremely expensive. La Cañada is about five to seven, five to nine thousand dollars, from my information. I've checked other areas. Because of the diversity, number one, because of the size of our city, I still think it's the right way to do it. And I think that I would not take any money from them, even if I was, I think it should go back. I would like their endorsement, because I've worked with them, or they trust that I'd be a good leader, and that I'd work with other, that would be able to get clear understanding of what the issues are, and that they'd trust that we'd make a good decision on that. So in my mind, developers, they have a free voice. The Constitution, the Supreme Court just ruled on free speech, and I believe it is free speech. But is it coming back when we're sitting here on the dice? Are we going to make a decision based on a thousand dollars? I've got to tell you, you've got to be pretty poor to understand that that's going to be a problem for you. If you're going to take a thousand dollars and change an opinion, that affects our community.
Thank you. The next question will be directed first to Mr. Mohill. Glendale currently receives significant revenue from Glendale Water and Power, but such revenue is under challenge by current litigation and/or a potential ballot measure. What is your view on this issue? Also, if Glendale were to lose some or all of this revenue, what specific types of revenue increases or spending reductions do you believe should be considered to compensate for such a loss? Mr. Mohill, your two-minute response, please.
Presently, about twenty million dollars a year is being transferred out of Glendale Water and Power to the general fund to pay for the non-GWP services, and a significant portion of that money goes for the salaries and the pensions of the city unions. If Glendale was to switch tomorrow and go to the county for city services, we could save, well, let's see, about sixty million dollars a year is being spent on fire, police, for their salaries, pension, and benefits. And those cities that contract with the county, the pension plans do not put the taxpayers on the hook for any pension plan failures. We in Glendale belong to an organization called Calpers, in which we're put on the hook for their failures. Last year, we were on the hook for thirty million dollars, and the year before that, twenty-six million dollars. And now they're talking about another fifteen, ten to fifteen million dollars again next year. It will never stop, because we're always on the hook. We need to switch tomorrow to the county of Los Angeles. Approximately forty-four cities in the county of Los Angeles contract with the county for fire and police. Glendale should join that. If you look right now in the paper today, we're going to be seven years in the hole, according to an article in Glendale News-Press in today's paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karolian, your one-minute response, please.
We all know that there is a case pending in courts today. If the courts decide that the city of Glendale is in violation, then the city has to put the money back into the utility fund. And if that happens, then of course, it will force the city to limit its expenses and do things within its limits. As to what can be cut, as I said, as I answered in the previous question, several things need to be considered. Not necessarily each and every one of these, or just one. Again, it can be a combination of several things. Reducing city staff, that is a possibility. We should be aware of that, and we should be expecting that. Reducing salaries and/or reducing benefits, outsourcing some of the city services. These are all options that should be considered if the utility money goes back to the utility fund.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. This is really the twenty-million-dollar question. I am in favor of the transfer, and I hope the litigation goes that way. If we lose the twenty million dollars, then I can see three steps that we'll have to take. First of all, we have to cut expenses. I would look at overtime, management-staff ratio, operational expenses, and pensions. From there, I would go to raising revenue, and we would have to encourage and advocate that small businesses come to Glendale to raise revenue, so that we get a larger property tax base. And then, if I don't, I will not be able to find twenty million dollars in those two by raising and lowering. So I would have to go to cutting the services. I would come to you and ask your priorities as to what we would have to cut: police, fire, libraries, or parks. Would be a tough decision, but we can do it.
Thank you. The next question will be directed first to Mr. Garpetian. All current city council members live within a small zone of the city, which is the wealthiest enclave. The city has not had a council member who lives south of the 134 freeway in well over a decade, yet more than half of the city's population and an even greater share of its tax base are south of the 134. Would you support a charter reform that would provide for district-based elections in Glendale and ensure that all areas of the city had direct representation? Mr. Garpetian, your two-minute response, please.
No, I would not support districts in Glendale. And I'll tell you why. City council, the city has spent a lot more funds in South Glendale than any other part in the last few years. Look at the parks, look at the mini-parks, look at the Pacific Edison Center. They just opened up a soccer field down there on Pacific Edison School. But as a voter, as a taxpayer, I would like to have five council members represent me, not just one. I do have properties in a city that has different districts. I'm on the corner, I'm on the intersection, and that has three different districts on that intersection. God help you if you want to get something done. I think if the people in South Glendale, it's the norm, basically. Middle class pays all the taxes, we build all the roads and airports and everything else, we build all the infrastructure, and we vote. But they may not have had a good council candidate to be elected. Maybe that candidate did not run a successful campaign not to be elected. But I think that the council members currently, just to be fair, they're not looking at the South Glendale as it's not their district, and they look at only their districts. I think the South Glendale is being represented well, and it should be that way. But districts, you know, if you haven't been in a city that has different districts, go take a look at them, see how does it work? Everything you want to get done, there is a big dogfight. So I would be opposing any districting in Glendale.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes, your one-minute response, please.
That was a question that was just asked to me about one o'clock last night on social media, and was the fact that one of our residents here asked that question. And I'm 100% districting. I've been looking at that for a number of years, and now that I've ran for office, the difference is, is I'm accountable to everybody in this city. It's my job as councilman to make certain I'm listening and working with the citizens. It doesn't matter whether in La Cañada, Glen Oaks Canyon, West Glendale, the horse ranch area, the Rancho area, or South Glendale. My job is to find out what the problem is, listen to them, and make a solution. And it costs us more money to make that work, but we get better leadership, we really do. And in the districts where they do have, I mean, in cities where they have districts, Compton had it, total failure. Other cities have it, it's a failure. They keep coming back, but we speak fifty-two or fifty-seven different languages. Everybody's in the community here. We need to unify our community as residents of Glendale and talk to each other. That responsibility starts with city council.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill, your one-minute response, please.
I'm probably the only person here who's in favor of council districts. The present system is broken. Every year, the power people, with all the votes and the money, live above the 134 freeway, and they put in their candidates. The people in far north Glendale, in the Montros area, they had a candidate. Unfortunately, he didn't pan out. But there was an example of a person who wanted to be a councilman for a special district. We need to have council districts like in South Glendale. By having council district, the interest of every area of the city is being here at city council, not just the people who have the power and the money. It needs to be divided, and therefore, I'm strongly in favor of council districts.
Thank you. The next question will be directed first to Mr. Karolian. The Alex Theater is a landmark as well as an economic and cultural asset to the city of Glendale. What is your view on the city's responsibility for maintaining the Alex Theater? Mr. Karolian, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you. Alex Theater is just like any other historic center for the city, that needs to be receiving assistance from the city government in order to not only continue its operation, but also in order to improve and enhance. However, though, aside from receiving any assistance, the city government, the city council, especially the Arts and Culture Commission, have a lot of responsibilities on their shoulder to make Alex a much successful venture. We do have several organizations, we do have several functions, sometimes organized by the city, many times organized by individuals. However, the outreach that the city can do, especially hand-in-hand with the Arts and Culture Commission, to attract more functions into Alex, to open Alex into the rest of the communities, not just for the Glendale community, there has to be a structured way of approaching things. There has to be an outreach which is structured, there has to be a way that the entire media is used, and not be expected that organizations and/or committees come and ask to rent the hall once in a while. So when we have that... So when we have that moral support provided to the Alex Theater, just like to other entities in this city, I am confident that Alex will eventually perpetuate and become the financial center that it should be eventually, not expecting any assistance, especially financial assistance from the city government.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. Because of the loss of the redevelopment funding of, from the state, the Alex Theater is presently in jeopardy of being lost to our city. I feel that would be a tragedy. The Alex Theater is a historic site, and I, since I am a, an advocate of preserving our historic sites, I hope that we can strike a bargain with the, the people that are, we will be owing the money to if we had to sell the Alex, and try to get a fair rent so that we can keep it in Glendale and not have it developed or changed hands or sell it. It's too important to the arts, they do such wonderful programming, and we should all take advantage of the Alex for all of the, the great programs that they present. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian, your one-minute response, please.
Yes, thank you. Alex will never be lost, not in our lifetime. There's already talk with the state agencies that are in charge, they are, the city is structured the way that Alex can be kept and be run the way it's being run. This is the only property that I do not mind subsidizing for. Because the Alex, we're subsidizing about four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars a year. Alex is not just a revenue-generating institution, it is a landmark. We, we have Alex, we have other things that comes with it. It's not just a, a hall that is being rented. With, Glendale has a unique opportunity to utilize its, its, its assets to become a, a hub, arts and cultural hub in these tri-cities. Pasadena did everything they could do, but we are still starting. We can turn Alex into a, a great place, so it will be self-sufficient as well. It's not that I, I don't want it to be self...
Thank you. Now, each candidate will have up to one minute to respond to any questions not previously addressed to them. Mr. Barnes, your one-minute response, please.
Okay. One is, we have a computerized system on our signal lights that cost us, the taxpayers of Glendale, money. And then you have a police department that wanted pedestrians because they were across, they were jaywalking, so they put immediate, on-demand pedestrian crosswalks. What happened to that computerized system that allowed traffic flow? It was on Brand Boulevard, it was on Glendale Avenue, or set up for that, and on Central. What happened to that electronic system? That computerized system cost us money, and when you put an immediate, on-demand pedestrian cross, you screw up the entire process. There's something wrong with that. And I'm asking, let's find out what that is and fix it if it needs to be repaired and get that traffic moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill, your one-minute response, please.
I'd like to talk about campaign contributions. I think it's pay-to-play politics. Right now, the Glendale Fire Department is handing out mailers to their favorite candidate, the union candidate to my left, and I think that's wrong. We, I don't believe we should have campaign contribution going to the, the different candidates. I'm against campaign contributions, especially by the, by the Fire and Police Department.
Thank you. Mr. Karolian, your one-minute response, please.
I hope, Mike, you didn't mean me when you're saying the candidate to your left.
Your left, your left.
Thank you.
That would be mean.
Let's all, let's all...
Halfway there, halfway there.
Is that going from my time? Let's all assume that, well, this is in regards to generating new taxes and inviting new businesses into Glendale. It is ideal to do that. However, the reality of life is totally different. And when I was looking into the possibilities of doing that, I realized that, first of all, in Glendale, we have only three percent retail vacancy. So how many businesses can we have to come into those three percent spaces and generate retail, one-million-dollar sales in gross tax? From that, the city will eventually get one percent, which is ten, ten thousand dollars. Now, if the math is correct, if we do the math correct, we need over three thousand businesses to come to Glendale.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, your one-minute response, please.
I just wanted to comment on the transportation, the buses. I believe that was the first question that you asked, and I just wanted to let everybody know that the city is doing a line-by-line bus route study so that they can get the B-line, the brand-new buses up and running, and the disenfranchised, far-north Glendale will have transportation, hopefully, to get down to the city to shop and, and enjoy the city. And also, there's talk of the Red Line and Gold Line joining from Pasadena to Glendale to Burbank for rapid buses, and I think that that will help our transportation problem in the city and encourage people to come here, shop, dine, and enjoy our city. And I'd also like to say that I am very proud that the Fire Department has endorsed me. I have no, I'm no obligations to them at all. They understand the integrity that I carry with me, and all my decisions will be made with an open mind.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian, your one-minute response, please.
Yes, I want, I want to touch on cutting expenses. Everybody talks about cutting expenses. I think we need to concentrate on increasing our revenues. The way you do that is you bring, you give incentive to businesses that will come to Glendale, bring better and higher-paying jobs, and bring tax, sales tax to Glendale, not just property tax. Look at Exchange, look at Marketplace. These, these developments were done a long time ago, but on Marketplace, the second floor has been sitting vacant where Cost Plus was for years. Bring a company, a high-tech company, that they will pay our people in the city, they, they hire people from here, pay higher, higher, higher wages, and also create more and more sales tax. Also, as far as the DSP goes, we need to do a gap study, which, what gap study is, you need to stop and revisit everything and see, all these units that are building today, what's gonna hap, what's gonna do to our downtown, and what do we need from here on? Do we need two thousand more units, or do we need five hundred more units? I think the...
Thank you. We will now conclude with a two-minute closing statement from each candidate. Mr. Barnes, your closing statement, please.
Okay, thank you. One, I'm a resident of Glendale since 1973. I've raised six children in this community, five of which were young ladies and daughters, and two of them have master's degrees from SC, the others are from other schools, but I've raised them in this community, and we raised them when it was, diversity was coming in hot and heavy, where we had to take English and no longer segregate English, second English languages. My children went to all of the Glendale schools, and I'm very proud of them and what they've accomplished so far. My wife and her father were born in Glendale and raised in Glendale, so I feel like I'm a long-term resident here. I've been working in real estate for over thirty-eight years, across the table with so many people, talking to them about the benefits of Glendale, talking to them about how to make things work. That's where I come up with how important it is for a councilman to be able to listen to all of our residents. If they come up to the podium, to the podium and they're speaking, there's something that we need to do. Listen, they may not be right, they may be impolite, but you know, there are good ideas, and our job is to get those good ideas and make them work. On council, I will make sound financial decisions that produce increased revenue to the city. I'll support smart growth programs. Why? Because we have to increase revenue. The other one is, is that I believe that one of the things that we need most in council is mutual respect, number one. Number two, common sense governance, so that we look at what are the best ideas for long-term benefits for the city of Glendale. Those are important. That's why I'm asking for your vote on June 3rd and on your absentee ballot. I'm looking forward to you voting for me, and together we'll make Glendale a stronger place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Like many of you, our family moved to Glendale for its character, generous, open space, small-town environment for raising children and developing lifelong friendships. Glendale has always had a reputation for our quality of life, yet just in the last seven years, many of the things that make our city so special are being lost. Traffic gridlock has created a nightmare, especially the 134 freeway at Brand, Central, Pacific, and Glendale Boulevard. Inadequate parking and variances granted to, to developers at taxpayers' expense. High density of population, overdevelopment, crumbling roads, crumbling GWP infrastructure, bond obligation, dirty parks, pedestrian and cyclist safety, new and old fee increases and taxes in order to balance the budget, water rate increases, electric rate increases, unfunded and unsustainable salary and pension obligation of our union workforce. And finally, as in South Glendale, future high-density development with low-cost housing along Foothill Boulevard. As a council member with your vote, I will strive to stop these injustices and bring back and protect the quality of life we used to enjoy. I have been a community advocate for the people for the past seven years on behalf of homeowners, renters, and merchants. I was supported by over a hundred and twenty-five small businesses in the 2013 election. I've been there for you as a concerned citizen and as the people's advocate. The public has a real choice for real change. Your voice for me, and your vote for me, will give me, gave you the sixth voice at city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karolian, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Thank you. We live in a difficult time when our city, just like the rest of the country, is faced with a number of challenges that need fair, sound fiscal judgment, balanced, yet drastic solutions. All of the candidates should have their own ideas on how to fix the issues, issues such as traffic, budget, housing, safety, community programs, issues concerning the disabled and small businesses. Our approaches may differ, but I hope you realize that my decisions will be with Glendale's best interests in mind. I have no personal gains to secure in this position, but I have genuine concern, the experience, the education, deep knowledge, and the passionate willingness to serve this community as your council member who will uphold the values upon which our individual and collective success depends. As to my reasons for running, first, I will do everything to keep Glendale a very safe city without causing additional cost to the budget. That's where the community organizations and neighborhood watch groups come to assist the police department. Secondly, some neighborhoods are overcrowded with not enough parking and little green space within walking distance. This, this issue needs to, to be addressed. Traffic safety continues to be a challenge as well, and it also needs to be given, added, excuse me, added attention. Thirdly, our city must be able to provide more assistance to small businesses and be more attuned to their problems. My decades of service in the Glendale community has been acknowledged by the Los Angeles County Human Relations Commission, the National Conference for Community and Justice, the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, the News Press, Pasadena Commission on the Status of Women, Los Angeles County Supervisor Mike Antonovich, former mayors Eileen Gibbons and Sheldon Baker, former Assemblyman Bill Hogue...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Devine, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum, and all of you who are watching at home, and all of you that are here that are interested in city government. I am grateful for the awards I have received for my contributions to this city, like Congressman Adam Schiff's Woman of the Year Award, the YWCA Woman of Heart and Excellence Award, and the Business Life Women Extraordinaire Award. But I am even more grateful for the opportunity that I have had to collaborate with so many organizations like the YWCA, the Armenian National Committee, the Latino Association, the Armenian Relief Society, the Korean Association, and so many more. My background and these experiences have prepared me to be your city council representative and make sound policy decisions for our community. We all want the same things. We want a safe city, we want green space where our, and parks where our kids and our grandkids can play, we want to preserve the integrity of our neighborhoods, our historic districts, and our historic homes. We want to support small businesses and to attract visitors to our community to boost our economy. A leader will listen to your concerns, will gather the pertinent information, will ask the right questions, and come to sound, fair decisions. My track record shows that I am that leader. My priorities for Glendale are traffic, pedestrian, and cycling safety, traffic congestion, fiscal sustainability, including pension reform. As your city council member, my goal is to ensure that Glendale runs efficiently while delivering the services that are important. I am your neighbor, I want what is best for this community. I have a positive relationship with the city council members, and I have no ties to development. On June 3rd, I ask that you make your vote. Devine, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much. I want to thank the League for hosting this forum as well. Two minutes is not enough for me to tell you how much I love this city, how much I care about this city, what I want to do for this city, but I will do my best. I don't want to talk about all the negatives all the time. Every city has its issues, we are not any exception. Glendale is a great city, and don't let anybody tell you otherwise. This is why I live here, this is why you live here, this is all of us, why all of us are living here. But my, my goal is to work hard to grow Glendale and make it even a better city. I'm a family man, but I'm also an experienced businessman. My plan is to grow Glendale by having a long-term, long-term plan that looks into the future, not just the next election cycle. What are my priorities? Improve public and traffic safety by education, enforcing, and reengineering. Supply much-needed crossing guards at every school site. Increase revenues, not taxes. Stop wasteful spending. Do not invest in trophy properties, invest in projects that will generate revenues for our city. Give incentives to companies to move to Glendale that will bring high-paying jobs and more sales tax. Help ten thousand small, yes, ten thousand small businesses in this city. Get rid of the bureaucratic hurdles, and make Glendale a business-friendly city that is open to growing new and good-paying jobs. This has been a family town for over a hundred years, I intend to keep it that way. On June 3rd, I'm not just asking for your vote, full of confidence, but I'm also asking for your friendship. And I promise you, I will bring trust and responsibility back to our local government, not just empty promises and vague slogans. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank all of you. That concludes our candidate forum. Our thanks to the candidates and volunteers for your participation in this evening's forum. We're also grateful to Arti Kasakian and the Glendale City Clerk, the staff of GTV6, Tom Lorenz, the Public Information Officer, and Brian Halloran of Glendale TV, for their valuable support in making this event possible. Finally, the League of Women Voters of Glendale, Burbank, would also like to thank both our audience in attendance and those of you at home. For those who will be voting by absentee ballot, please be sure to mail in or drop off your ballot so that it is received by June 3rd. And remember, on Election Day, it's the votes, not the polls, that count. Thank you, and good night.